Good morning. Welcome to County Commission Meeting. The 12th day of March of 2025 this year has flown by. We've had multiple meetings, more than I can remember in the time that I've been here. Especially with adding extra meetings out like we had last week. So thank everyone for showing up this morning. We'll start off with the pledge allegiance and. Charlie, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, yeah. It's great to have a room full. We wish we had it more often. All right, this assessor or this assistant assessor. Just one set.
How are you doing? I'm well, thank you.
All right, I move we approve the exonerations.
Here we have motion second on floor, all those in favor?
Um, yeah, on the. The pizzas for the response of the forest fire at the Danish. I'd like those to come out of General County and not the fire levy. It was like ninety dollars or something like that, around ninety dollars worth. Just those and we'll get that lined out in our reimbursement policy, but that's not an excess tax. Eligible issue. Also want to examine this conference and how many people are going to that conference on a regular basis. It's happening annually and I think we're paying for a lot of people to go to trade shows. And I want to understand why that many people need to go on behalf of the fire association.
Well, it's it's lodging for six state firefighters. And they go and look at different materials and different technologies that have come available. And since we are such diverse. Fire departments that we have so many that, you know. I don't I don't think six states are unreasonable, no.
As long as the six state aren't from the same. Departments or the plateau. I mean, I don't know who the six to eight are. Or anything like that. I just want to understand why so many need to go because they're scoping on behalf of the fire association.
Mr. Burner, he can probably expand a little bit on that what what. Can you help sell a little bit now?
Every, every year the association. But to send a few people there to look at what the new materials out. What new products are out? I'd say most of the group purchases that have been made over the. Thirty seven, forty years of our levy have been from. Individual finding, you know, better boots, better coats, that type of stuff, new. New technologies out there. That's the main purpose of going. Plus, they also have classes. It's not just, just a trade show.
So there's training involved?
It's it's the International Association of Fire Instructor Conference. So it's training and it's also the trade show.
I it it would help. I I I think it'd be a good idea then, and it's something we can discuss with Josh that when he bills for it, that it. Identify that because that's that's.
I'm not saying everybody goes to a first class, but some of the classes are for actually a part of. And then the other departments like our department, we try to send people every year also just to do the same thing. Back to looking at, you know, body of a local new engine purchase. That's one of the main things was sending several people out there. Often the different manufacturers actually crawl up under new engines and all the equipment. You know, look at them and see how they're made. So we have a real good idea when we start. We start looking at fitting our equipment, you know, and the manufacturers are in Florida or in South Dakota or something like that. That, you know, you look at the newer apparatus. You know how to make it. And so you have an hands-on idea, you know. If you don't like that.
How to customize it too. So how do you have any insight into how the fire association decides who it sends to the conference?
Generally, they they offer to the officers for the association and they usually set a limit of type of people. And then they open it up to see if they other cheese. A lot of that's due to who can actually take the time to go and who can't. So it's hard to spread it around where I'm different department. But departments will like to extend their own people out there too. Because they're looking at purposes that the rain department is going to make outside of what they're purchased by the county.
So maybe just set a limit to the number of people who would go, but I just wanted to ask about that. And the other thing is I saw a request in there from Josh and he's not here, so I can't address it to him, but. Where he was asking if something could be approved between meetings. Well, we've been meeting every week. There's nothing that. Should need to be approved between days in that case. Now, if we're going, you know, a couple of weeks in between meetings, then. We'll address that in the reimbursement policy, but I I don't understand why he was doing that. So other than the Danish pizza, I move that we approve vouchers and invoices.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I have a question on that. You want to move the voucher and invoice from the levy to the general account?
The pizza.
Okay, so after the pizza has been moved to the general account.
I move that we approve all of them. I was gonna make a separate motion about the pizza.
Okay.
But.
All right.
Okay, so the first motion is. Approved the voucher invoice that was presented minus the Danish pizzas. My second, go ahead and we'll get that motion out of the way and then I'll move the second motion.
All right, you second. So we have a motion and second, all those in favor?
And then I move that we approve the Danish pizza reimbursement out of General County.
I second that motion off.
Here we have a motion second on floor, all those in favor? Hi. Okay, thank you. Okay, meeting minutes?
The only minutes that we that I've seen are the ones.
Yeah, that's all we have. We put them on there in the event they got done, but it was a lot of them.
It was a lot of minutes.
It's only the regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so I move that we approve those minutes.
I'll second the motion.
Here we have a motion second on floor, all those in favor? Okay, we have any state settlements?
I don't see one. He's on one of the memories.
Okay. Bruce, it's up to you now.
All right, so the first thing is the dinner award. For the CFI, I made during the project. And it was. I don't know whose writing this is.
Allison's.
Well, Allison, can you read your writing?
That's not bad. That's my friend. Nader Nicola.
Yes, they were the low bid and.
Mason ring.
Yeah.
It was eighty one thousand nine hundred dollars.
And they let. I can read Nicola. I can't read that first word.
So I knew that we award the. How project bid to Nader Nicola's Mason ring for eighty one thousand nine hundred dollars.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion second on floor, all those in favor?
Throw me under the.
I'm sorry, I'm just answering.
She was ready to pound.
And then the next one is the Memorial Building Port. And the low bidder was New River Contracting at twenty five.
That's also my handwriting.
I want, I know, I can read that out. You must not have been as we can make a hurry. So they are the letter that all the requirements.
Dan researched, uh, Dan reviewed.
Okay, and it was. Substantially lower than all the other bids. The next highest bid was more than half. Or I mean, more than double. So I move that we award the porch project to New River Contracting for twenty five thousand five hundred forty nine dollars and.
My second to motion.
Here we have properly moved motion second on floor, all those in favor?
And then number three is the community corrections grant and Teresa asked that we postpone it to next week because she's waiting on some information. Coming from the state to believe that.
I move that we postpone that item to next meeting.
Second to motion.
Have motion second on floor, all those in favor?
And then the next item is the encoverage criteria for the re-creating needs to be finalized, so.
When do you want us to move it?
When's the next day?
Next week. On the nineteenth and then the next one's in April.
We'll put it on that. Live on the media next week. Clear it out.
I move that we postpone that item also to three nineteen.
My second.
Have motion second on floor, all those in favor?
Yeah, Jesse Richardson, isn't, isn't Jesse Richardson, no?
Yes.
Okay, we can go ahead and move on to that then. Jesse.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you, Jesse?
How is everybody?
We're good. How are you?
Good, enjoying this warmer weather.
Yep, it's nice to have that warmth. All right, we're going to be talking about the Unified Development Code. The commission has selected. West Virginia University Law Clinic to. Rewrite or rework our our code course. I've worked with Jesse on several different projects. He's. They're great. They do really good. And these these update definitely needs to be done. So Jesse, I think Commissioner Taylor had a few questions for you.
Well, I had a couple of of statements, but one have. How many counties in the in the state right now still have a UDC?
Unified Development Code, I think. You may be the only one. Most counties, well, not very many counties in the state have zoning. But those that do generally have zoning and subdivisions separated.
I believe that there's seven counties across the state that have. Codes and stuff that they follow. They may not have. The same code that we have, but there are seven that have.
I've heard five and I've heard seven. I never know what the exact number is.
It's somewhere in that ballpark. I'm not a hundred percent sure either.
Well. When was the last time ours was updated? Like two thousand nine was the last time it was updated. Some sections even before that. So. One thing I'd like to request is that. We get you a copy of our strategic plan, hot plan. And that you guys take into account the priorities the commission has identified in its comp plan. With regard to the tenure of the document. As you go.
Definitely, we would want to do that in any case, so we definitely. Will take a good look at your comp plan and see how that connects to the zoning ordinance.
And they're also, I mean. Since this is the only one you've been doing for a while, we've noticed some. Issues that have popped up like vape shops. We have an ordinance right now that. They can't be within a certain distance of school zones and things like that, but. That seems to me like something that should be incorporated into this. John mentioned solar farms. That's another thing that's come up in the area. One thing that really concerns me about our current UDC is we've had issues with. And I understand the planning commission is an independent board. That we appoint. But I'd like there to be some guidance within the rules that. That the UDC or that the planning commission adhere to. That it doesn't require more of applicants than exist. In in the UDC or within the rules or. You know, presented by us or the UDC. Is that something that's come up before where they are asking for things outside of the scope of the application? And denying app applicants based on their. Failing to provide the information that they think they should provide. That's not a requirement. Is there a way to incorporate something like that into the?
That that should not happen because the planning commission doesn't have authority to do that. So I'm not exactly, I'm not exactly sure what's happening. But we can certainly clarify that. And I believe you all have requested training. For the planning commission and the Board of Zoning Appeals, and I think we can definitely emphasize that in the training. And the training is something. According to the timeline, we're going to be starting the process really soon. Which I think everybody's happy about. And I think that training could happen in the next couple of months if that's what you all want to do.
Yeah, definitely. That would that would help quite a bit. Some of the things that they're hearing. You know, it is some good opportunities. But there's still some questions that we have when it comes in front of us. So anything that we can do to clarify. And to make. Our jobs more in alignment when it comes to the the. Passage or rejection of a request would be much appreciated. Jesse, do you have a timeline that you can send Angela that she can share with us would be fantastic? I know that she's already shared the comp plan with you. Is there anything else that you need from Angela in order to get started?
Not at this time. Christie, I talked to Christie. She. Has some other projects down in your direction. So she'll be scheduling some meetings in the near future. I'll send that timeline to Angela and. I mean, I guess I can talk to Angela about setting up that training. And about setting up. The first meetings.
Okay, that sounds great. Commissioner, any other questions?
Just one more thing about guidance. If there's any way to simplify this thing so it's more, so it's easier to comprehend for the layperson. I mean, I'm I'm also a lawyer and I, you know, it's it's cumbersome. It's cumbersome to understand. I would appreciate if you guys would strive to do that.
Yeah, we we certainly will. We are all for making it. Simple and straightforward so everybody can understand it, the regulated community and. And the citizens and the people who are trying to apply it.
Okay. All right, well, we're looking forward to the training and and. Help that you can offer us and we thank you again for being willing to help us out.
All right, thank you all and good to see you this morning. Look forward to seeing you soon.
All right, Jesse, have a great day.
You too.
Okay. Can we move self right up? Okay.
Let's do that in April. When is contact up?
March.
Oh, so we can't do that.
Yeah, we'll have to do that next.
All right, move, move. I move that we move this to March nineteenth.
I'll second that motion second on floor, all those in favor?
They could go on the exhibit list too.
Okay. Well, because we have to. Do the. Recommendations from the planning commission will start that at nine thirty, so right now we'll move into recess for. Oh, no, there's, no, there will be several things in the budget. We'll move into recess for ten minutes. We're back from our recess and we'll turn it over to Angela.
Okay, so you guys have two hearings today. We did appear. I'll read the norm, the name and the legal as required. So the first case is Z dash five four three. Dash two five dash one. It's a request of. Riverwind Retreat LLC owner for exchange and land classification from RR, which is rural residential to B three. Which is business tourism district on property legally described as surface. Eleven point one three, which is branch by survey. You guys should have the copy of the minutes and your proposal. So the planning commission did meet on March third and then Morgan motion to approve and Mr. Ray second. So I think the applicant is here.
Okay. Well, first. I just want to say that. We understand a lot of people didn't get noticed about this.
Exactly, yeah.
So something that. We're going to start doing is sending certified mail to people in the future. And it's something we discussed in the past, but hadn't, I guess, started yet, but. But we are going to start doing that because it's it's some, it's it's a complaint that's come up enough time. You know, we feel like there's an issue with getting notice to people. So we're going to start doing that. So we want to apologize that you didn't get notice. Let you know that we're taking action to rectify that.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I keep, but you know, regular mail is not.
No, so definitely needs to be certified, you know. For planning commissions only every.
Yeah. Yeah, we did it the last.
All right, so how do you want to let the applicants?
Yeah, let the applicant speak. James, the applicant.
All right, good morning. Well, I I hear that. I'm Nathan Thomas, by the way, one of the applicants. I would be pretty upset that it's being out of my property, so that explains why. I I I knew some people out there. It explains why probably I was waiting for phone calls for people to call and maybe talk to me and see what was going on because I had sent out my. They had about three weeks before to the victim, the properties right next to it. And I thought, well. Okay, so anyway, our. Plan is what we'd like to do is. Down along the backside of that property, adjoining the golf course.
Is this the map you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Can you put the map up?
He doesn't have it.
Hey. Okay, Angela. For future meetings, I'm going to make sure that Wilbert has everything so that he can put it up so people can follow us.
But I agree with John in the future, it's everything that's in our topics. We could have like these pictures and stuff. Because that won't be on the Cessar's website. Yeah, Mr. Thomas, since since nobody was able to attend the planning commission meeting, if you would outline your plans.
Sure.
For the people here.
Okay.
So the the plan was to, on the lower side of that property. Which, when we get the map, I can point to it, but which is right along the line of the golf course was to put a couple cabins. Basically run. Airbnb style and then a. A pole barn, which also has submitted pictures of. That could be used for people to. Get married with the golf courses, the backdrop. There. Kind of like a little wedding event venue or a place where somebody could have a get together or something.
Are those these two pictures?
Yes, sir.
Are do you have a structure there already?
No, there's nothing there.
Legal profile.
Yes, sir. Do you need me to point to where that on that map, what I was talking about? It's it's on the map you have, but you don't have the map that has the.
Okay, I have a couple more questions on these photos.
Okay.
You have.
Those are ideas of this. Yes, sir.
Are these both ideas of the style?
Yeah, of of the the type that we wanted to be able to do.
Thanks. Okay.
That that's the gist of what we were wanting to do. We had. Really just there's no structures on the property. We had spoken with the health department to make sure. You know, what kind, what how how that handles with septic, things like that. Got that taken care of and make sure we understood power and all that. So all that was in the packet that we submitted where. Where that was at.
So you also have in the packet for the tiny houses, the cabins.
Yes.
And. How many of those you want to build? We have four on there. You want four one bedroom cabins?
Yes.
Okay, so four one bedroom cabins and you're going to have a wedding chapel. But I think you called it a barn dominium or something like that.
Pole barn, yeah.
Pole barn, yes. What about the roads going in and out?
It it is. On on your drawing. Our plan was to only allow people to go in one way and out one way. So before the turn at. At Brown, at at the end. Too far, yeah. It's the. It was to come in here. Circle down to where this would be. And then come back out here.
Okay, but the road that that your proposed road would connect to.
Yes.
What is that road?
That's branch.
Okay, is that a two lane road?
No, no, it's barely one road, lame road.
He knows, he's just asking for the right.
I will be quiet.
There are people listening that don't, they can't see this.
When you're, when you have people there. Are, do you have somebody that's going to be on site twenty four seven as you have the? It can't be.
Is rented? Yes. Yeah, that's been on plan.
Okay.
So your cabins, you state here in your in your. On your submission. That the. Rental cabins depending upon the attraction also may end up with extra people camping in the cabin, beach houses and ski area cabins. Notorious for examples of this. So you really don't have, you got a one bedroom cabin, but you said extra people may be there.
I don't know what you're reading. That's not something I've turned in.
This is not part of. You you it's what the tiny houses, the bedroom that was in the packet.
Angela.
Is that part of the code? No, that is, that is through the health department. This is the, no, this is the health department, what they consider for their sector system. That's what the health department, they do cabins for people. That's their determining. I read it.
I mean, what we're talking, we're talking about one bedroom cabin could be a.
Right.
Fifteen bedroom cabin, fifteen people sleeping on the floor or whatever.
Well, that's why we want to have people, that's why we are, we want to have a a a place to check in and if if there are people staying on the property, we we want someone there. That that's monitoring that and watching that. So because it would not be good for us either for that to happen.
No, it wouldn't, you know. One thing that that is a sticking point. For me. Is the road that you're going to be using to go in on to go to your property. Not that I'm against economic development. But I'm also a proponent of the people that. Are in that area.
Sure.
With having extra traffic coming in. That road isn't going to be satisfactory.
Sure.
I I feel that. If it were a two. Um I I feel that if it were a two lane road, we would probably be having a different discussion right now. But where it's just a single lane road and I've been on that road before. If children were out playing or if somebody was walking a dog or out there on a horse. And you have people coming through on that small road, there's gonna be an issue.
Especially tours.
Yeah.
But.
Well, one of my concerns too is that we tend to look at the character of the neighborhood, wanna rezone something. And we have rezoning in here that's been really close to commercial areas, but there is no um commercial development. Right. That whole region out there. I mean, that's a very rural area. And um so we, you know, people move. People don't move to Gatewood, be around it.
Sure.
Um and and not to be around like worse. I mean, you either live out there, you live across the river somewhere if you're trying to avoid the crowds. And so to me, a project like this would change the character of that neighborhood in a way that. Would not be consistent with, because we're trying to balance economic development with um the quality of life for the people who've been here. And we live here. Um there has to be a way to live in West Virginia and escape some of that madness too. So um I'm I'm leaning against this. You know, of upholding the planning commission. I mean, I'll just I'll just say it before we hear from the public, but. Um I'm leaning against, you know, upholding the planning commission's recommendation in this space for those reasons.
Is that your motion?
Should I make a motion or should we hear from the public first? You guys wanna talk?
Okay, but you're gonna be limited. Two minutes?
Okay.
She can't narrow her down to two minutes.
She she'll do a best try to.
You get the last.
Morning.
Morning.
My name is Chrissy Bryant. I've lived on Brown's Road for almost fifty years. I moved away for one year, moved back, bought a little house, being near my children and my older age. Which I don't when I'm gonna get there. Anyway, I've remodeled this little house for the last twenty-three years. When I sit on my front porch, I hear nothing. I hear peepers, I hear children playing. I hear the click of a golf ball. I don't hear a lot of noise. Sometimes you can hear a little bit of things over in Fayetteville. But it's so peaceful and so quiet. And to me, and by the way, I'll preface by saying I had no knowledge of this till two days ago. And I read the letter and I will say this. Talk is cheap, action speak. I s- I read about the tree line. Well, I live across from Hall Five. So when I'm sitting on my front porch, I'm gonna be looking right at that wedding venue. I'm gonna be looking at all that noise because that's gonna border the golf course and that's what I see. And so, you know, I raised my children on Brown's Road. I helped raise my grandchildren on Brown's Road and now I have a great grandchild who's moving out on Brown's Road. And I fear they won't be able to ride their bikes. My neighbors have horses. They won't be able to take their horses out. The children, you know, my daughter and I walk all the time and our road just cannot handle that kind of traffic. Just can't. So I implore and, you know, vently. Oppose this uh development of this property. And I ask you to search your hearts. If this was your neighborhood that you lived in for fifty years. In peace and quiet, would you want this moving into your neighborhood? Thank you.
Thank you. I am too. She kept it very short. I don't know what you two are talking about. Yes, I know. Yes. Anybody else wanna say anything? Come on.
My name is Brenda Bryant Shurkey. My great grandfather worked the bottom of that hillside where it joins on to the national park. He worked all day. He farmed. He took care of his family there. He died of a stroke there. My grandmother, great grandmother, she also died there. Their son, my grandfather, Charles Bryant, and his wife lived on the property right above there. It's all still family property. Every one of those houses up through there. They're either one of my cousins or my brother or my niece or my sister-in-law. My other niece, my nephew, we're all family there except for that one little piece of property. That was won by a woman in Charleston through divorce. She had promised to sell it back to our family. And instead, she sold it to Ryan Wines, who in turn sold it to a corporation of other people. And now we have this mess. But we go there because I grew up as a military child. We lived in the south side of Chicago. I had to fight every day. I lived through the Vietnam riots. We lived right outside New York. I was beat up. I was terrorized. I didn't grow up in a safe place. Now I have ten great grandchildren. I own the property that is right connecting to theirs. Right now, my ten grandbabies can come over. I can put up a little pool in the yard. They can play. They can run right next door to my mom's house, across the street to my brother's house, my sister's house. With this conglomeration of strangers, they're they will not be safe. They will have the torment that I had as a child. No child should have to live like that if their family has their blood back for five generations. Which is how long we've had that property. To be invaded by people having fun that wanna drive by and say, look at that, they have their teeth. No, just no, it's wrong. Sorry, thank you.
Okay, I uh thank you for the comments.
We would. Yes, ma'am. But this has been our residence for ever since I've been here. And so my family lives over there and uh late great daddy, the third. Generation, he's the one that bought all that over there. And it's been a family thing forever, cause he was uh. Probably in eighty-five, nineteen eighty-five. And so I enjoy over there. It's peace and quiet. And I could speak about the golf courses there. I used to be able to walk through the woods there down connected to the golf course. And then if they decided to take the leak, they would come out there right by the fence, no matter who was there. I had to turn around and walk back up with the hill. Now that's several years ago. And me and my husband was running down there walking. And they come over through their through the fence to pick up golf balls. Well, they tore the fence apart to be able to get in there. And every time he fixed it, it would take another hole come in there. And we were in there one day and we was walking around and uh. Somebody come over there to pick up a ball up. And so my husband told him, says this is proper private property, don't you? I'll see that as private property. And uh they went ahead, got the ball, went back over to golf course. Okay, well, no longer and he was over there, a ball come and whizzed my husband's head. Now, I was there, I witnessed all of this. My husband's doctor, not more. But I can tell you about the golf course and if Moore got in there, it's all connected together. And we do have peace and love up there. And I would like to leave it there. Like we just have one road coming down through there. And they would all be on that one road and we don't need all that traffic going there. So anyway, you can take it for what I say, because I won't tell you nothing but the truth. And it's family. And we have peace and quiet. And our ancestors are gone. But we love our area and we're Christian people in there, the most of us. And we don't need no. Or driven around.
Well, thank you for your comments. We appreciate that.
Thanks.
Can I say something?
Yeah.
Sure, because these people are all family, I'm not, but I live there. Yeah, just what they said. I don't want to echo everything they said. Plus, what you're talking about, there's the road, the the infrastructure's not there for the traffic that will be there for these events and for the cabins. And I don't know how many Airbnbs this county has in it right now, but it's enough. We need manufacturing jobs in this. We need some kind of jobs to come to this county instead of Airbnb's. All that does is create service jobs. This these cabins might stay all year. They might stay rent. But that that barn or whatever you wanna call it, you can call it for family or units, whatever you want. It'll end up being a party barn. There's not enough out there. There's there's people out there on golf course that drink right now. That's enough. We don't need no more people out there drinking and driving on that one lane road. I don't know what the cause of service right now or for the sheriff's department in this county, but I'm telling you, we don't see them out there. Now, they got they got a uh, is he American or he that?
Yes.
Okay, they have a Ken folks that's on sheriff's department now. See him out there at one spot, right? But there's nobody else out there. There's no, and this this little lady right here, she don't want that behind her house.
I've had peace and quiet over this so far. And I'd like to keep it that way.
That's right. And everybody out there feels the same way. We already have a golf course that we have a problem with. People wanna urinate all over the place. And I've done talked to them guys and they ain't done nothing about it. It's 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 too much, it's gotta stop.
I know what drugs can do.
That's me. I do too. I worked on sheriff's department too, so I know what a drunk can do. We just don't need it there. There's not the infrastructure. The sheriff's department don't need the extra string and trying to answer calls out there because people get stupid. With guns or whatever. Woods right there. Think about the fires they had in California with with people starting fires. That's all woods right there. If they get a fire started down there, this lady's gonna lose her home problem.
Yeah.
And somebody else too. And they got an Airbnb out there right now.
We pay golf balls come in my yard.
Yes, ma'am. I put nets up around my house to protect my house from the golf. And but they still don't do nothing on their side. The fence looks like crap. It's tore up. It it looks like crap out there. And we don't need no more trash coming down the Dagon Road, throwing beer cans out the road onto our bar. And I'm not trying to be a jerk about it, but I'm trying to give it straight up facts. We don't need that on that road. Okay? And I would appreciate that if y'all would vote that way for us. For the people who elected. Okay?
Alright, thank you, thank you.
I can do it from right here.
Okay. Go ahead.
I don't live on Brown's Road. I live on the Albertson Road. And in order to get to Brown's Road. It is also an unlined road. It's not too much. So I'm coming out of from the concern of not only does it affect Brown's Road, it affects Albertson Road.
Yeah.
I'm also coming into it as a concern and I know if Mr. Thomas, he's a nice wonderful guy. I'm just disagreeing on this. I am very concerned. It's funny because everything you said, that's what is on my list. Anytime that we change residential to business, we need to be cautious and judicious before we do it. You also mentioned earlier in the meeting, the the codes that you were talking about. And I remember coming to those meetings at Legion. And I'm talking about how far ahead that county was in person. We chose to live there where we do because of what you said. But before we make that change, because once it's changed to business, even though that's the plan today. Let's say if something happens and they decide to sell out to somebody else, it's not business. We don't have, it's once we make that change, it's not. So I I just urge you to be very cautious before you change any. Thing from residential to business anywhere in this county because of that. Thank you.
Okay. Mission.
I was just gonna say, Mr. Thomas had made a point that they were gonna have somebody on the property. Um but we can't regu- that's not, you can't regulate that. I mean, he, you know, can have the best intentions in the world. But we can't force him to have somebody on the property or anything like that.
But it wants out the problems.
No, and that, listen, I I reviewed this and and we we've had several hearings about other rezoning things and. And the considerations were different. There was already commercial property there, that sort of thing. But that that is not the character of this neighborhood. And for that reason, I'm gonna move that we um. Vote against, how how do I have the word at Angela?
You're you guys are gonna make the recommendation to deny.
To deny the planning commission's recommendations and and the rezoning request.
I'll second that motion. Here we have properly moved the second motion on the floor. All those in favor? Hey, you guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the day.
Mr. Thomas, you guys do have a few um rights. Angela will send you a letter.
Kevin, need some order. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, sir.
We need some order here, please.
Alright, so the next case is Z dash five four dash two five. Step one, it's a request of Hobo House LLC. The owner from a change in land classification from rural residential to B two. On property legally described as six point five seven acre surface will creep six two two over four seven six. And um Mr. Morgan is on our board, but he did abstain from voting. Um and Mr. Ray motioned to approve it and Mr. Tucker does second. This property has never been B two, even though through the years, there's been different random businesses. So when Mr. Morgan came to me on his business ideas, it is surrounded by businesses that this lot was grandfathered in. Um so in order for him to continue with no issues, I did request that he rezonate for B two for a restaurant and a war. Business, but he is on the business.
And there has been businesses on this property.
I think it was a putt putt course way back and it was before I lived here. There was a church that had a special use permit a few years ago. Um so historically, there has been businesses that is still remain as rural residential.
Okay.
Did anyone oppose the reset?
No, I spoke to Mr. Johnson, you know, he's really other other than um. But Mr. Clark, he really, he just thought it was already B two and Rick Johnson thought that it was B two, so.
So thi- this is the old Jimmy Hall place? It's a cross. Off of Old Route sixteen.
Yes.
Yeah, I know where it is.
And Mr. Morgan has a place right there.
Yeah, he purchased it not knowing that it wasn't a B two district.
Correct. And that's the place to talk about where Mr. Morgan has his.
Yeah, he's cleared some property. If you notice, there's been property. There's a building right here close to the road.
Do we have an address for the record?
Um Ben, do you know your physical address? I go on.
Yes, it's three two seven nine Court Street. Fayetteville, West Virginia, two five eight four oh.
And that's off Court Street through there.
Yeah, that's all.
All of Court Street. That's a long street. It's a long street. Okay, um. Ben, you wanna go ahead and explain what you got going on?
Sure, yeah. You know, it's always been a business location as long as I've been around here, you know, twenty-five, thirty years. I bought it knowing that it was zoned rural. I bought it knowing that it was zoned rural residential with the understanding that that was kind of the default zoning that the county enacted when they enacted zoning laws. Um, everything around it is zoned either B two or B three. Um, depending on its use. I've got my construction company office in there and I'm planning on putting a restaurant in which fits perfectly into the B two classification.
Ben, uh, do you have water? I mean, city water there?
Yes, there's city water. Um, it's provided by Oak Hill. Um, and then there's city sewer that's also provided by Oak Hill, because there's a dump station or a pump station uh, that adjoins my property and Rick Johnson's property that provides a force main for my property and Rick's, Rick Johnson's extreme expeditions.
I don't have a problem with upholding the planning commission's recommendation in this case. For the reasons John was pointing out, there are commercial businesses all around it. Angela said, there's, you know, it's the only one that's not commercial in that area. The property owners don't object to it. Um, and are also commercial property owners. So I'm gonna move that we uphold the planning commission's recommendation and approve the rezoning.
I'll second that.
Here we have a motion properly moved second. All who's in favor.
Good to see you, Ben.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate you. Sorry I couldn't be there in person.
Okay, we appreciate your serving on our board.
Absolutely. You guys have a good day. Bye bye.
Bye bye.
Okay.
Budget.
Okay, I sent y'all a summary.
Yes.
So basically, um, for general counting, you can do a cost of living increase of two thousand dollars per employee if you change to the new insurance, like Plan C, um, you just have to decide if you're gonna do a health reimbursement plan or a health savings account.
What's the difference?
Uh, so health reimbursement account is you are funding the deductible and you only reimburse as those like charges come through. The health savings account, you just put the money in an account. If it's not used, it stays with the employee and builds up over time.
Well, the reimbursement, I think.
Yeah, probably so. Um, but the health, it will fully fund the deductible because the Plan C is a high deductible plan. But when you compare the two, and I have all the information, it's like a, a really sixty page booklet. Um, prescription wise, a lot of it's covered the same way. And there's actually a website. We can send all that out to employees to show them the difference. Um, we, you have to decide this soon because open enrollment starts April second through May fifteenth. Um, and employees could still buy up to the more expensive plans and pay the difference in premiums, so. Also included is where you requested a reimbursement option for gym memberships for the deputies since the gym isn't available. And you had requested, I think, up to thirty dollars.
I set up to thirty dollars.
Thirty dollars a month. We figured thirteen grand total.
Yeah, we, we would have to, yeah, thirteen, around thirteen thousand dollars a year. We'll have to figure out a process for that, but I mean, it's something that's terrible.
They bring in a receipt, they reimburse.
Yeah, because right now they don't have a gym and that's a, just kind of like the shooting range. It's a requirement for their jobs. And I think we need to provide them access to, to that.
And then that, uh, it also includes the new positions, um, requested for community corrections for the case manager. And I put GPS monitor version, but I'm not sure it's what you call it. And then, um, the deputy, whatever you wanna call the O E N person, I don't know, emergency manager, I think you might wanna look at that title. So coast severance, normal statutory payment you have to make, like like or Western Association Counties, County Commission Association, in our newer.
Are we funding those memberships valuable?
Yes.
I find it valuable. We, we learned to be.
Especially right now.
The, the, where we were, where we're gonna, you know, maybe, maybe move our, our insurance through the county association.
We didn't learn that through them. We learned it through me.
Well, I know, I know.
I learned it through Jenna and she learned it from Raleigh County.
We, we've discussed all of this too.
And, um, it includes the funding for the Humane Society at the same amount that they have now, two fifteen. And then you can also fund a spay and neuter. There's still an additional around four hundred thousand you can um, you decide what you want that amount to be. I think, I don't know how you manage it, but I think a spay and neuter would eliminate some of the problems. If you help fund this spay and neuter program.
Well, and you mentioned that we did that before and.
And, and nothing ever came of it. That's, yeah, something needs to be done with it, but I think. Yeah, and then there's, um, that additional amount. You could allocate some towards the elevated housing, or you could put it in contingencies to, which is basically like saving it for something major that's apparently just, they keep coming in, so.
I like that idea. I don't wanna allocate everything we have.
No, no.
Also, we need to look at, uh, reducing some taxes for citizens of the county. Um, to give you an idea, um, as of yesterday around ten o'clock, the following excise taxes have already been collected. Excess tax, thank you. Who else had that issue? Law enforcement has a million sixty eight thousand, six hundred and thirty six dollars and thirty six cents. The library fund has four hundred and eighty eight thousand, two hundred and seventy five dollars and sixty eight cents. The fire association or fire levy has one million, five hundred and eighty seven thousand, five hundred and sixty three dollars and seventy three cents. And the one that that, uh, has really bumped our citizens' taxes up is the school excess levy. They have ten million, ninety two thousand, eight hundred and five dollars and sixty three cents. While we can't do anything with the school excess levy, I did contact the superintendent of the schools and, uh, one of the board members asking if they would consider giving the county citizens a break on the excess tax. They said that they received a letter from, um, Mr. Young. Uh, the same letter he read to us concerning, you know, with the taxes continually growing and he would like for us, which we had already mentioned beforehand, to take a look at dropping what we could in order to reduce the tax obligations for the citizens of the county. Um, I really feel that we need to look at that. It should be a part of our budget process. It, it, it's just, there, there's just too much obligation out there for our citizens. That's what they're doing, increasing utilities. I mean, there, there's just too many things going on. Any way that we can give them a break, I think that they would appreciate it.
I agree. So another thing that I don't see on here, but Ruth, well, I think we've all discussed and Ruth's discussed with us, um, some merit based raises within our part of the the county.
And, and that's, uh, something we would go into executive.
Oh, yeah, we would, but I'm just saying that in general terms, that's something.
Yeah, we have the funding.
And I, I'd like to make a comment and to, to go with what John said, you know, the people vote the levy in, and, and they do, they vote the levy in. And that, that means therefore, however, the things they can't control that we can control, I think is what John is trying to say, that we can help the taxpayer out. Things they cannot control. So I think that's the route we're looking at. The levies are good. I mean, they're, in my opinion, they are good. They, they fund our services. They fund fire, law enforcement, library. In my opinion, they are good. However, what they cannot control is what we may be able to help them with. They vote that. So I just wanted to put that in there.
And they did, they voted in this last levy to allow us to have the discretion to reduce it when we're collecting too much taxes, which
That's correct.
I'm happy about.
Yes. And that's, that's been responsible.
But Anthony, one thing that came up, as Ruth has been looking at the budget recently, is that the jail bill is going up and, and not because the price has gone up. Is, is that process still intact to review that bill?
Yeah, I mean, it's something we're working on and we're working on other things to try to be a little more aggressive to get people out.
Okay.
But we seem to, we seem to have an uptick in cases as well.
Yeah, the, you know, violent cases. Ones that aren't eligible for bond or violating their bond.
Yeah, and, you know, I don't know what the explanation for that seems to be. There seems to have been an uptick. People that, uh, I mean, there seems to be an uptick in families in general, but then also people that are not appropriate to be, uh, placed on bond.
It's not, it's not a, um, a change in the wind with one of the judges or something, right? So it's just what's happening?
Um, I mean, I can't really I can't say there's been a, you know, I can't say there's been a difference in terms of how the judges are getting this. Honestly, I think, uh, basically what I've seen so far, I think Judge Bass will be receptive to putting people on bond. Um, given Judge Blake was not willing to allow people to be on, to be able to take their testing possibly with controlled substances. And I'm not saying we should just let people have free reign, but I, I think there's things that we can do, sort of putting them in the southern region jail in specific, sending them to the day report center and trying to get them to some type of treatment program, but, um.
Are you confident the judges, magistrates, and public defenders all are aware that we're willing to pay for GPS?
I am.
Okay.
Yes.
Alright.
Maybe actually. I'm not, I'm, I'm gonna say that.
Okay.
So what, I think what you're saying is we're having an increased violent crime.
Well, it, it's not just necessarily violent crime. It's just the, the problem for now is that when people are on bond, it's one thing to let them have one mistake and then to put them back out on the bond. But when you have somebody that demonstrates repeatedly that they can't behave themselves when they're out on bond, you don't really have any other option.
But are there not other options that we can have to, to have them show, uh, some source that, that, that they have to be, uh, held accountable? That maybe day report, maybe other things?
But the problem is, is putting somebody at day report doesn't necessarily always change their behavior. Sometimes it does, but but we have people that are day report that just trample all over their bond conditions.
So then once they do that, are they not held liable for that and would be re- reprimanded to for their action? Well, I mean, so what I'm.
The overwhelming majority of bond conditions are not something that they, the people can be prosecuted. Um, the overwhelming majority of bond violations are positive drug screens. And generally, what happens in that instance is the day report will try to work with them, but after they were, after four weeks, they're posting drug screens and after four weeks of trying to get somebody into rehab. I mean, you're, you're basically placed in a position where the defendant has demonstrated that they're not interested. They're not willing to change their behavior. So generally speaking, our only option at that point is to put them in the southern region. Uh, I mean, and prosecuting somebody for a positive drug screen is impossible. Um, because I don't have drugs. I mean, I can tell the drug system, but without actually having a controlled substance to present to a judge or a jury and helping. I think it's a practical impossibility to prosecute those types of cases. But, but the bigger issue is the penalty for violating your bond is going to the southern regional jail. And we try to work with people. I mean, sometimes what, at least what Judge Jung um, has done, is he will put somebody in the southern regional jail and leave them in there for uh, a week to two weeks and then bring them back. The idea is, okay, do we have your attention now? And then we try, we, we'll try to get them back out on bond again. But it's not uncommon for someone in that situation to continue violating.
And since the drugs in it are almost always behind the crime committed in the first place, there is an argument to keep them, you know, once they won't, you know, show any interest in getting help. They're not showing any interest in changing their behavior, so the odds increase that they'll commit another crime while out. Now, if they do that, they would be charged, but, but we're trying to, you know, avoid that situation because it's.
I mean, we have to try to. Protecting the public with, with putting people in the southern regional jail. There's no easy way to.
I mean, I like that Judge Jung is doing that. I think that's a good, because sometimes it does get their attention.
It, it does.
But sometimes there's a rehab versus jail, you know, mentality. And if they get a bed, they can come out and be released directly to rehab.
Do we have rehab, uh, facilities available that are, uh, not full and that we could get people in if they would wish to be?
Generally speaking, yeah.
We do, we, we, we're not, we don't have a backup on that, and we would like to, but we.
I mean, sometimes there might be a short wait. But, um, the program that seems to be the most popular is Recovery Point. Uh, and the reason I think Recovery Point is the most popular is it appears to be effective program. People, they get through, it's not easy to get through their program. And people get through the program. Um, they tend to not relapse and they have three facilities in the state. They've got one in Huntington, Parkersburg, then, um, Bluefield. And we send people to all three. They only have one facility, which is, uh, nationally, Panama County and Charles. But generally speaking, there's not, if there is a wait, it's not a big risk.
So is there a backup in time of that you're able to try, go to trial or go to, you know, is, is there a backup with that? I mean, that, from what I understand, with, once they're wa, they're waiting in southern region, we, we pay for it while there's, there are people. Once they come out, they are sentenced or then, then that's when it stops?
It stops as soon as they're convicted of a felony.
Correct. And is there a, a backup in, in, or a long wait time in their, their speedy trial?
Um, I don't know how the, I mean, there's no easy way of answering that because every case has its own specifics. I mean, I can say to you that one of the things that we pay attention to when we're deciding who will die um, or I should say, when we're deciding who to present to the grand jury. If someone's incarcerated, they go to the front row.
Sure.
So if someone has been locked up and hasn't been able to postpone, then we will present that case to the grand jury sooner rather than later. Um.
And they kinda have to, just give a trial review.
There's constitutional, right?
But, but the other thing to keep in mind is that, um, there are there are certain dynamics that exist and sometimes postponing a trial is, is inevitable. There's, there's no getting around it. I mean, I generally, it's, it's a relatively simple case. I mean, my, my philosophy is to get as dependable as quickly as possible, but, um, it's also worth noting that as far as how the judges schedule trials, it's typical with the judges to schedule multiple cases for trial on the same day. The idea being that when we get to that day, there will be only at best one case remaining. And that case can get a trial, but sometimes, um, sometime you'll get to the trial date and there will be three cases that are still pending. And one of the problems we have is that if a case gets moved from its original trial date, sometimes you're looking at, sometimes you're looking at months before you can actually get back with the, with the trial.
That's all the questions, right?
Motion, John.